Good morning. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, September 14th, 2016. We're here in Courthouse Square at the Senate -- Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street, Northeast Salem. Will you please join us for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And some people were asking me why I was wearing this nice tie this morning, and I said it was the closest thing I could find to a Nebraska Cornhusker tie. I'll let you think about that.
I like it.
Yeah, I know you would. We have somebody, David Beam is with us today. David, welcome. You signed up for some public comment, so if you'd like to come over and say good morning. It's always good to see you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, my name's David Beam, and I've been watching on the homeless problem We got a lot of families out there don't have any services after five o'clock. I'm trying to get a drop-in center started. Eighty-eight, I got the first one in the nation started for Salem area for a drop-in center for each county would have services after five o'clock. And I've been working on the registrar on this every year, and every time I try to do this, the people said they don't have the money. We can use the money, add the lottery money, use that for the system out there for the families and the little kids. A lot of them are living in the streets, don't have any services after five o'clock. Now, the registrar will do this. I'm working out with both sides of the office on this. House and Senate, I was working on was Peter Courtney. He said I can bring that up to the next registrar. And the government, Kate Brown said she will work on this with me. So, I'm trying to get all, every county in the state will work on this. I got the police department, Marion County Sheriff said he will work with me on this. So, I'm working with the mayor of Salem and the county commissioners on this. And then I'm working with the Brooks Commissioners on this, too. So, I'm working with everybody in the system in the city, work this and get this done first, because we wouldn't be in this mess today, because a lot of people don't have no jobs or nothing. The system's backwards. We need to fix this now, soon as possible, Commissioners. And I think we can get this done right. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I appreciate all you do for our community and keeping us informed of what you're working on. Thank you.
Janet, you got any questions?
No, no.
But I think we can get this done. I really do, because we wouldn't be in this mess today. Because fifteen-sixties, we had everything open. Now, we got crime going on. We got families got nothing to do. With a lot of people down here, just causing some problems down here for the buses. So, I think we can get this done. Transportation people said don't have a lot of problems down here, because people hang out down here, causing some problems. And I think we can fix this. And I think everybody works together. I think we can fix this from now, by the next session starts. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, so we have nobody else signed up for public comment. We'll write into our consent calendar, and Commissioner, I believe it's your motion today.
Yes, I will move today's consent calendar three items. The first one is Business Services, approve a recommendation to change unit designation in grade steps for contracts and procurement manager, class code number 008, position number 1171. Under Community Services, approve an order reappointing Marilyn Dedrick, Randy Frankie, Chuck Lee, and Sam Skiller into the Marion County Children and Families Commission with terms ending January 31st, 2020. Under the Sheriff's Office, approve an order amending Order Number 16-99, establishing and revising Marion County Sheriff's Office fees for certain reviews, permits, and records.
Second motion.
Motion, second any further discussion? I just want to make sure there's not a typo under Community Services. Chuck Lee, I thought that was Chuck Lemmons. So, you weren't at that Children and Families Meeting, I think, the first time, right after they had gotten married, he introduced himself-
Oh, really?
-as Chuck Lemmons, and I've never let him forget that, so I call him Mr. Lemmons every time I see him. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our first action item today is consider approval of proclamation designating September 17th through the 23rd, 2016, as Constitution Week in Marion County. And we have some guests that want to present that to us today. Is it Day Westine and Shemekah chapter Daughters of America Revolution? And you have some guests with you?
I do.
You want to just, yeah, just pull up an extra chair there, and you can all three-
That's all right.
Okay.
Pull the microphones up.
And just pull those microphones close to you and-
Hug them.
Yes, there we go.
There you go, we can hear you good.
I'm Day Westine. I'm the past Regent for Shemekah chapter, and this is Cookie Fescans, and she's our Regent, and our lead today is a member of Shemekah, too. I'll let Cookie take over.
We're here to ask you for a proclamation, designate September 17th through the 23rd for Constitution Week for Marion County. It is something that's vital to us, and I think it should be vital to every citizen in the United States, and we're here in our county with it.
Great. Good. We are with you 100 percent.
That's good.
Any comments or questions?
Well, I should read this ahead, and maybe it'll say it in the proclamation, but are there any particular activities you'll be doing this week, or something to make people aware of?
We are putting posters out in schools and businesses. We are also, we're joining the children at St. Joseph's Church, and the church is in Salem, ringing their bells on the 16th. The 17th is a Saturday, so we'll do it on the 16th, recognizing the signing of the Constitution. It was signed on one o'clock in the afternoon on September 17th, and that's what we're celebrating and ringing our bells for. We'll be also handing out flags to the kids, and a lot of us are going to the schools and walking around the block with them. It'll be a fun time.
No, we really appreciate you bringing this to us each year, and it's such an important commemoration. Certainly, the Constitution is the foundation of all of our freedoms and-
It is.
... our way of government, and we have been a shining light to the rest of the world for all these many years, and it's important that we step back and remember that. So, thank you for being here today.
It is very important to keep it up-
Yeah.
... and visible.
The American experiment still continues. I think this is good timing, because we were, I was just asked, it was given a proclamation ordinance about the Second Amendment, and I think this is, the Constitution is much bigger than that, and this is a way to reinforce that here, not only in Marion County, but throughout the state of Oregon and the United States. So, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I believe we will entertain a motion, and then we'll read the proclamation.
I'm just thinking back to prior days, Commissioner Carlson and Milne would kind of have lessons debates on the whole thing. I felt a little inadequate for a year or two, but I'm pretty up on it now, in case you want to-
Well, no, I can be the inadequate one.
Well, if we wanted to demonstrate something, probably, but it is an important thing. That was a fun time, too. So, Chair Cameron, if I could, I would make a motion that we do approve a proclamation that designate September 17th, 23rd, 2016 as Constitution Week in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. And we will read the proclamation. Would you like to-
Sure.
... begin that?
In the matter of observing, September 17th to 23rd, 2016, as Constitution Week in Marion County, proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 14th, 2016. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas we celebrate our heritage as a country bound together by fidelity to a set of ideas and a system of governance first laid out in America's Constitution, the product of fierce debate and enduring compromise, our nation's Constitution has guided our progress from thirteen to fifty United States that stretch from sea to shining sea, and-
Whereas September 17th, 2016, marks the 229th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas this week we reflect on the basic rights and responsibilities of citizenship, the founding documents from which they were drawn, and the extraordinary legacy of progress they have enabled, let us forever uphold the ideals the framers enshrined in our Constitution, and let us never cease in our pursuit of the more perfect union they imagined so many years ago, and-
And now, therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in us as Commissioners for Marion County, we do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, dated at Salem, Oregon, this fourteenth day of September, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll have a copy for you. Oops. I think I forgot that. There's one we missed.
There you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to get a picture with all of us? Why don't we just wait, and we'll come up there, and we've got one more signature here, and we'll come up and get a picture with you. Okay, so that can wait. Okay. Oh, my Constitution. Yeah, one more Constitution. Oh, really? Get to say the Pledge of Allegiance on Wednesday morning, and then we get to dedicate the Constitution Week. Pretty cool.
This one doesn't sound like it's much fun.
Yeah, in fact, if we could find something to do with this stuff-
Now, we're talking about leachate.
Leachate, seven million dollars or something like that. Well, good morning. Our next action item is from Public Works. With Public Works, consider approval of contract for services with Finley Butts Limited Partnership for hauling and disposable of leachate water for $6,966,000 through September 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Alan Haley, Public Works Director.
I don't know if that one's working.
A little closer up.
I don't know.
It doesn't sound like it's real.
And Brian May.
There you go. Okay.
Our Environmental Services Division Manager. Yes, this contract is with Finley Butts, $6,966,000. It is a five-year contract, expected to cover approximately 30 million gallons of leachate. And for our audience who doesn't know what leachate is, the essence of it is, is it's rain that flows through the ash piles that we have up at Woodburn that are there from the burner. It collects into a lagoon, but it's considered wastewater, and we have to haul it away. So, this is an event we do every year. We haul throughout the year as it gathers from the rainwater. And we're looking at, we are looking at ways to try and change that in terms of how much we get, how much we receive each year. The rain, of course, is going to come, but there are measures that we hopefully can take, and I'll let Brian speak to them of what we can do about the quantity of leachate we get.
Good morning. One of the things I want to speak about is the fact that leachate is one of those kind of necessary evils in landfilling, and the biggest thing we can do is avoid generation. So, over this last year, we had a kind of an open footprint of about 300,000 square feet, so we're working heavily to reduce that active area down to 50,000 square feet. So, we should see much reduced generation. Basically, when the rain hits, it's going to go through our ash monofil, and we're going to collect that as leachate. Going forward, we're also evaluating the idea of completely sealing that off with these temporary measures and evaluating other opportunities of hauling that material direct to landfill and doing a cost analysis to see if the cost savings of leachate generation versus disposal is warranted, just again, trying to reduce that bill as much as possible.
Question? Go ahead.
So, can you describe for people who might be listening what the chemical composition of leachate is in general terms? My recollection is that when Jim Sears used to talk about it, he said it's almost like saltwater. It's just salty. But people may be thinking, since there's all of this mythology out there about what happens with the waste energy facility and so on, that it might be a chemically dangerous kind of a cocktail. So, can you shed some light on that?
You bet. This is a non-hazardous material, and as you pointed out, it is basically a saltwater, just based on the constituents within the ash, the calcium carbonate and everything that trickles through. We have a very rich leachate that's got a lot of basically salt to it. It's a unique ash, because it is purely from an incinerator, unlike an MSW, which will have other constituents that carry other issues along with them. Ours is kind of unique in that characteristic, but at the same time, it does not work in your traditional wastewater treatment plant, because of that salt contact, it has a tendency to kill the biological activity, and it reduces our treatment process. So, that's what makes ours a little bit more of a challenge to handle.
Great. Thank you.
Just sticking with the leachate, I've had one idea, and as usual, you can just say, well, that doesn't make sense, but I've wondered about kind of re-irrigating during the several months over the working face to let a little more evaporation and catch more material, minimize amount of liquid. Would that work, or is that something we've already done?
I've had some discussions with Don Alexander, where we've done some evaporation, more in, I guess, in the confines of the lagoon itself. We haven't actually done anything really on the open face. A little bit with ash metal recovery, where we use it as a desuppressant, and it worked well. So, we can definitely look at that as another method going forward. Another thing that's being evaluated is Covanta is looking at doing liquid waste injection into their boiler systems, as a way also to get rid of liquid waste, so we're evaluating that also.
So, then that brings up my other questions, and two related. One, were there a number of bidders? Are there other people interested in taking the material? Or pretty limited response? Could you talk about that, Alan, a little bit?
So, we did have six companies show up for kind of an optional pre-bid meeting, but we only had one bid submitted, so.
And then I'm wondering about the bind of the five years, if we can come up with something different. Are we guaranteeing amounts and time in this contract?
No, there's no guarantees of any service to be provided here. This is a grand amount that we would spend if we have to have that much leachate. We're currently planning on between two and a half and four and a half million gallons a year. This allows actually for six-
Okay. So, it might not be this high in the total?
We do not anticipate it being this high, no.
Right.
Back to your irrigation piece, too, though, we are looking at the cost of what that kind of a system would be to put in up and over the top of the mounds, and how much effect that has, or the salt would have on that material in terms of replacing it, how many other years. We have been talking about that this past year.
All right, great. Thank you.
Just one question. I know in our meetings with Covanta, they, I remember them saying, hey, we'll take a look at using your leachate. Is that still on the table, or is that in negotiations, or where are we with that particular option?
So, I believe they've been doing tests to determine kind of what that impact is and how it affects her boiler system. They were a little late to the game in this bid process, but we're continuing to have those conversations to see if it's a viable option.
Imagine saltwater is not too good on metal.
Metal. I believe it only diverts about a million gallons for what the process that they need to have.
A million gallons a year of our two to three million?
That's my understanding.
Yeah. Okay.
You ready for a motion?
Here we are.
Mr. Chair, we'd move approval of the contract for services with Finley Butts Limited Partnership for the hauling and disposal of leachate wastewater for $6 million, or maximum of $6,966,000 through September 5th, 2021.
A second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And that concludes our business portion of the meeting. I'll read the calendar. This afternoon, and I'm not going to be able to attend that, I don't know, or you're going to attend that one, the reentry council-
No, I've got other meetings.
I've got other meetings, too, so, but there is on the calendar, a 2:30 meeting at Governor's Reentry Council at the Oregon State Capitol, room 350, 900 Court Street. And at three o'clock today, Economic Development Advisory Board meeting up at Columbia Helicopters at 14452 Arnt Road, Northeast Aurora. That one I will be at. And tomorrow, 9:15, at 8:00 a.m., City of Salem, Marion County meeting, location at the Sess Young in 1244 State Street, Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 15th, 9:00 a.m., Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Veteran Subkid Committee, location Academy Building, 182 Southwest Academy Street, room 108 in Again, on Thursday, the 15th, Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Support Services Education Subcommittee, location Salem Conference Room, first floor here at 555 Court Street, Northeast. Again, on Thursday, the 15th, at 6:00 p.m., Salem Hospital, Let's All Play Place Grand Opening, location, the corner of Mission and Church Street, Southeast Salem Hospital. On Friday, the 16th, at 1:00 p.m., Mid Willamette Jobs Council meeting at the Insight Boardroom, 626 High Street, Northeast, Suite 305, Salem. And Monday, on the 19th, at 8:30, we're upstairs here in this building on the fifth floor at the Silverton Conference Room for a calendar review. And on Monday, the 19th, at 9:00 a.m., management update, Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Monday, the 19th, 4:00 p.m., Mid Willamette Housing Initiative Task Force, location Kaiser Civic Center, 930 Chamawa Road, Northeast Kaiser. Tuesday, the 20th, 9:30 a.m., a work session on Capitol Projects Update, location here in this building, in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. On Tuesday, the 20th, at noon, Liberty House Champions for Children Luncheon, location at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Southeast. Tuesday, the 20th, at 6:00 p.m., Legislators and Leaders Reception, Oregon Civic Justice Center, Willamette University, 790 State Street. And I am not going to attend that, I'm going to go to the carts meeting. Are you going to?
I should be.
We didn't post that. We're going to want to post that, Christie. I think it's on my schedule, it may be on Sam's. I'll read that just for the record. I think that's our priority that day. Well, that was on what day? That was on the, that was at 6:00 p.m. on the 20th.
That in state?
It's in, it's in state, and it's the Chariots Public Meeting Regarding Changes to Carts in the San Am River Canyon. It's at the State and Library, Tuesday, September 20th, 5:30 to 6:30. It may go longer than that. It's 515 North First Street Avenue. That's on the 20th. On the 21st, we're back here for a board session in the Senator Hearing Room. And then Wednesday, on the 21st, there is another Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Public Safety Subcommittee, location Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor, and here in this building, and also on Wednesday, the 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Jerry Frank's 93rd Birthday Celebration, location Roger Yost Gallery Center, 388 State Street, Salem. Okay, that's a, the calendar's getting longer.
Yes.
It's that time of year.
So, I have something extra I want to show you, the little treat that came with my breakfast this morning at 5:30, just so you know.
I can't see it. How do you make it?
Don't you know how to run the good stuff?
Flip phone. So old.
So old. I had this all designed.
Dinosaur, as my kids would say.
All right, you guys. Take a quick look at that.
Ooh, baby.
That would be Quinn Brentano, seven pounds, 5:30.
Ah.
So, that's where I'll be this afternoon.
Congratulations. Well, we need to, like, transfer that to-
What hospital? What hospital?
Facebook.
It's in Portland, at Tiger, I think.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
And this is your son who's going to be moving?
Yes. He says he's moving to Boston after giving me my little present. Figure that out. I'll learn how to run Facebook. Anyway, it's a pretty happy morning.
You want to talk about this, the news story that hit the news, what we're going to do there? Do you want to share anything about that?
Well, you saw it on Facebook. I didn't see it on Facebook.
Somebody messaged me and says, are we going to have a hearing about this? And I said, about what? And then they sent me the link.
Right.
And I got to stay up close, Christie, sorry. And they sent me the link, and so that's where I found out about it, that it had been on the news. And, you know, talking with, yesterday with Sergeant Hickam and Code Enforcement with Laura, there's obviously a whole nother side to the story, and-
Yeah, but I think, I think we need to look at it both from what are the health and safety issues involved with it?
Right.
And obviously, if people are camping on property and health and safety issues aren't taken care of, that's important.
Right.
We need to look at what the state law is, and whether, because we're required to follow the state law, however, these might be areas of state law that we could take.
Broader approach.
I've been going to the Housing Steering Committee meetings for AOC, Association of Marion Counties, and we had some discussion at one of the meetings about whether or not the state agencies were going to be, and the governor's office were going to be bringing proposed changes on certain land use codes to the legislature, whether you collide, where you have this value of, well, we've got to protect farmland at all costs. We have like a bazillion homeless people, as David Beam aptly talked about in our meeting this morning, on the streets, and so I know when Sterling Anderson was here, and he went through some of the codes that we had, and the one that I thought was so bizarre was that if you have a mother-in-law apartment, and I think this is in state law for the rural areas, but it's in code for the urban areas, you can't have a kitchen. You can have a microwave, you can have a mini fridge, but you can't have a working stove. And I, you know, the story I've been telling is over in Boise, where my daughter is, and she takes me to all these tour homes, and I went through a 10,000-square-foot, $2 million home that had a mother-in-law apartment that was like a condo, off behind there with a full kitchen stove, full refrigerator and everything. You know, I mean, if it's not dangerous to do this in Boise, I don't know why it's dangerous to do it in Salem, Oregon. The city of Salem is actually circulating changes to there what they call accessory dwelling units, about whether or not you can have additional people on the property. And when you think about it, I mean, our son- And when you think about it, I mean, our son, who was in part of that little hiccup that we had where the recession happened and he happened to graduate from college in December of 2010, you know, right when he wanted to be a teacher, but they were laying off scads of teachers and, you know, tried, he spent two years just kind of drifting, trying to figure out what he was going to do after college and doing internships and volunteering and applying for jobs unsuccessfully. So he lived with us while he was going through that. Our daughter came back and lived with us when she was teaching school. You know, I mean, it's kind of the era where adult children are moving in with their families and living in the basement or whatever. And then also, we have an aging population and so we do have aging parents that live. And so then the question is, are we really going to be so strict in prescribing that it has to be in a bedroom? It can't be like in a, an RV out back if it's safe, you know? So I think we need to look at the policy and determine what makes sense and what we can do legally. If it's a state legislative issue and we think it makes sense, I think we should let the legislature know that. If it's a county code that we've just made more strict than state law just because we could and for some reason, 40 years ago or 30 years ago, it made sense then, I think we need to revisit that. So I'm not suggesting that the code enforcement issues aren't real, that there might not be complaints and maybe there's too many RVs or that, you know, they're not being properly situated or whatever. Those types of things need to be addressed. But I do think that we shouldn't just blow it off and say, well, you know, they weren't doing this or that because it is, homelessness is a major issue. And if we're saying we're going to dump some people on the street with nowhere to live, we're just contributing to that. So that's kind of my overarching feeling.
Yeah, good. Any thoughts?
Well, a number, but I agree with most of it. And my self thought is I, if it helps people, I'd love to do it. But there are some other issues that we have to factor in. One that I learned of all things at an Eclipse meeting, but there's people, no, it really is. We were talking, the question was about mass gatherings. And I basically, I just said, well, if there's less than 750, then the county isn't going to worry about it. Well, then there was a lady that has an RV park. Well, she was kind of concerned about that and I think rightly so. Said, well, you know, we follow the rules and now you just make, you know, the product we have to sell available everywhere else. So you have, there's, there's more things.
Yeah, I'm not wanting to set up an RV park in somebody's farm without the proper.
But her point was if you encourage them not to use the facilities intended, designed and planned for and vested in, that's an issue too. But I think we can find, we're apparently going to talk about this Monday to begin with, find out a lot about what the questions you asked and then see where we go from there. I also always hesitate to be changing ordinances in the situation of one case, one subject. So I want to look at that too and see if it's really a big deal and if there's some other way we can deal with a particular subject than changing the rules.
Well, we have highlighted these types of ordinances through the homeless task force. We just aren't done with our work yet, so they haven't come forward. So this is just kind of really, through one situation, moving forward a few months of discussion we'd probably be having anyway when the, when the task force talks about its work.
I'm really appreciative of the dialogue and, you know, to have somebody bring this one issue up is important and we can get to deal with it. But I've always said this about, the cost of housing in Oregon is driven by so many policies that, you know, you were talking about the thing in Boise. I know when Judy and I took a trip to go see the South, we stayed in Nashville, for example. And in somebody's backyard, they had another little one-bedroom, you know, kitchenette bathroom. And we did that through, I think it was Airbnb or something. But a lot of the homes there had those little mother-in-law, what they would call, whatever we call those little suites, right?
Accessory dwelling units is what they call in Salem.
And, you know, those are the types of things that we're not allowed to do here because of our restrictions. So I think that's some real opportunities to, but still, you can control those. You can, you can issue permits for those to, what do they call that, Sam, when they're trying to infill? Infill, trying to get more population in areas. So that, there's a lot of things that we could, we could potentially look at that I think the general public would benefit from in having more housing.
Right.
And hopefully, if you have more of something, at least in economics, you know, price, supply and demand makes a difference, so.
And I think if you allow one, it's not going to be like there's going to be a mass exodus from the RV parks for people to go out. The opportunities for those are limited, I think, in terms of where they are. And I'm not sure, I think we'd have to find out too, whether those RV parks are, I mean, are they hurting for business? Are they, or are they full right now? I know that there are, I mean, we've heard this in the various neighborhood associations that I go to. There are people literally with RVs on the streets of Salem that are moving them around and people living in them and.
Well, in that news story, did you get, did you get the link? Did you actually get to see it?
I did, yeah.
They ended up in the backside of Almsville, where somebody was camped out behind the church or the city hall or the school or something like that.
Yes, and that came up at that meeting too, that we apparently have areas, I think it's along Highway 22, anywhere you can kind of pull over, that's kind of becoming permanent camp. So it has to be a.
There's camps all over Salem. There are thousands of people in Salem that are camping out along streams and behind people's houses. And it's a rampant issue. So we've got to figure out legitimate places where people can be. And if someone wants to help out, a friend or a family member, I think we just need to talk about it.
Well, excuse me, the rule is like right now, 120 days if I have a right that they could stay. So, you know, that's like four months without an issue.
Yeah. My son stayed there a lot longer than.
But he was in your house, I have to look.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if we had had a smaller home, say, and we hadn't had room for him like that, it'd be better than a tent out in the backyard, right?
Yeah, I asked this question yesterday and I want to switch subjects, but unless you've got some more. But I asked a question, because I've got, you've been to my house years ago and I've got on the side, when I built it, we actually lived in an RV for six months.
Are you going to violate?
I guess so, now that I'm finding, finding that out. But we, when we built it, we had power for the RV. We have a sewer into the septic tank. In fact, we put the septic in first, which cost us more because we knew we were going to do that. And we've got water there. And I asked the question yesterday, the code enforcement. So I can't have anybody live in that, in that motorhome on the side or in a trailer. And they said for 120 days you could. But how do you track that? How do you enforce that? So it's complaint-driven and so we probably need to take a look at all that.
And that's a key point with me too, the complaint-driven nature of it. So if people are having problems, then it is a problem. But if they're not, then I can feel better.
I just need to hear more about the nature of the complaint, why they think it's a problem.
So this, I talked to her yesterday about how this all got to this level and we can get into that Monday. But switching gears, yesterday we had our conference call with, wow, with the, all the people that are, have, now have jurisdiction over this Detroit property and.
The same group when we were digging the Almsville ditch, I suspect.
I left, I left with Jonathan from Congressman Schrader's office and he looked at me and said, this really, the state? Because if Army Corps says they, they have no juris, Army Corps says you can do this under their permit or you don't need a permit. Now the state's coming in saying, no, we got to have jurisdiction over this Department of State Lands, ODF and W, all these people are coming in saying, no, now we have jurisdiction. And we kind of looked at each other and said, well, this is federal land, but the state is coming in saying, no, we have jurisdiction over this federal land now. It's really becoming a big, a big deal. We have a meeting on the 21st up in DEQ's office at the Lloyd District to have all the state agencies there, have these business owners give their presentations of what they're trying to do and then answer questions going back and forth. It, wow, it's really amazing. How many people are coming out of the woodwork saying, no, you, you, you got to have us involved in this thing?
I'm thinking of the quote from the Director of Division of State Lands about eight years ago, who told us that she had no, or their agency had no responsibility to protect people or their property. And only the environment.
Yeah. Oh, anyways, so we're trying to, Business Organs got some money for, to hire a consultant because now we need a consultant to help these people get through the system. So we're, we're working on that today, getting that application and so we can get some consultants in the room on the 21st that can hear what's going on. Because according to DEQ yesterday, they, they said, well, you really need a consultant to help these people get through this process. And I'm thinking, well, what's your job? So anyways, it's, I'm, I'm finding out that the, never mind, I'm not going to say anything more. That's a big issue, but that happened yesterday, so. And we're going to tour the airport today, the Aurora Airport with EDAB, so that'll be fun.
Very good.
Yeah. How was the Oregon Garden yesterday?
Good, moving along, strategic plan, looks good to me, a little over ambitious, but that's where they want to go. So they have big plans, some new design for features that I think will attract people. In fact, it's set up, it's a conifer forest. And the general idea, they have a basic outline of Oregon in, in the ground. I mean, it's huge, but it kind of looks like Oregon. And they'll have the type of conifer grown in each portion of the state as it goes left to right. So it should be an interesting concept and a water feature. So there's things happening.
Good. Okay. We done?
Yep.
Good? We will adjourn and we'll be back next Wednesday.